All right, so we'll get started at six oh five. We'll call the special meeting of the city council. Clerk will call the roll. I'm playing the role of the clerk. Counselor Anderson Burgos, reminder to everyone, you're on mute, so unmute. And then we'll do roll call. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Counselor Bartley?
Here.
Counselor Graney?
Here.
Counselor Hernandez? I see you. Can you hear me, Counselor Hernandez? Yeah, okay. Counselor Leahy?
I'm present.
Counselor Bor Martinez? She's on. Counselor Bor Martinez, can you hear me? Ryan, can you hear her at all? We'll come back. Counselor Lisi?
Here.
Counsel McGee here. Counselor McGivern?
Here.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Sullivan?
Here.
Counselor Tomlin?
Here.
Counselor Bacon?
Here.
Counselor Bor Martinez, can you hear me?
I can't hear her, but she's not muted, so I'm not sure what's going on.
Probably having audio problems, so we'll get on that.
Yeah, I'll try to call her.
Okay, so with that, tonight's agenda, we have three items that the mayor is calling a special meeting. First one is the 2021 municipal budget. Their motion move.
Motion to take it up off the table?
So, it's to take it up off the table. With that, the mayor is here. Their motion to suspend the rules to allow him to speak.
So.
So, the motion is to allow the mayor to speak. All those in favor? All right. Opposed? Mayor, good evening. You're on mute. I can see you.
Yeah, good evening, counselors. Thank you for attending the special meeting. Three agenda items. Number one, just accepting the FY21 budget. Apologies for the tardiness. Sent it over via email a little less than an hour ago. I know typically when we submit it, it's just sort of procedural. The council, I think, lays it on the table and then schedules a hearing in the future for me and the financial department heads and other department heads to come in with a schedule. So my assumption was that we wouldn't discuss the budget in depth tonight, other than just the council taking action on it. Also added the grant for the police department as well as the bar grant reconsideration. And so those are the three agenda items on the meeting tonight and wanted to make sure that I was here to answer any questions or provide any context or information as needed. So again, I appreciate everyone's participation tonight in this special meeting.
Any, so motion normally is to receive and table.
Send pass the first reading.
Motion was to receive and pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern?
Just real quick, thank you, Mayor, and do we, when will we get a printed copy?
Yeah, so we will work within, we will work on printing that tomorrow as well as providing you the, so an actual budget book with the B cap printed page as well. And so we'll try to get that within the next forty-eight hours to all of you.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Yeah, we'll send an email out and let Ryan know when those are ready.
Okay.
Anyone else not seen any hands? Motion was to pass the first reading? All those in favor? Aye. What's the next motion, Counselor McGivern?
Mr. President, connect the motion to proceed out of order to take up item number three. We have a guest who has some time issues.
Second.
Okay, so motion, well, you do have a motion on the table with regards to the budget. What do you want to do with that before we?
Let's move the question.
Yep. So what do you want to do with the budget?
Motion to table?
Table. Should be the table. Second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So item one has been tabled. Motion is suspend the rules. Go to item number three. All those in favor? Counselor Bacon?
I have a point of order.
Yep.
Relative to the meeting tonight.
Yep.
I believe this meeting is out of order because we've had inadequate public access noticed to the general public, so that we're in violation of the open meeting law. And I raised this issue back in April on the twenty-first and the fifth. I thought we were taking some steps to correct the public access issue. And I know that there has been a step taken to allow for public comment by email, but that is really not giving the general public a similar access to a meeting that they would have if we were in. And I'm sure the council's aware, I have filed a complaint with some proposed resolutions. And I did that reluctantly, but this is now the third meeting where we have had an agenda. The phone information is available. Certain people are given the Zoom access, but the general public is not given access. So I really think these next two agenda items should be properly posted with a public access number made available for forty-eight hours prior to taking up issues that will be voted on. Thank you.
Yeah, so with regards to that, when dealing with special meetings, there is no public comment during a special meeting. That is during, whether it's a committee meeting, of which the chairs and the committee itself can open it up to public comment, or before a full council meeting, our rules require us to hand out a sheet to allow people to sign up for public comment.
My issue, Mr. President, is not public comment. My issue is public access to the meeting.
Yep, we're gonna get to that.
Doesn't have a computer or channel fifteen, we don't have access to the meeting.
Yep, I understand. In essence, when dealing with this matter of doing Zoom, we've been working with the police department as well as our legal department to find ways to allow for people to have access, whether it's through the email. Also, we do have an order in from Counsel Graney to see if the Board of Health can come up with a way of allowing access to members who may not have a computer. So those are all being worked on. We currently have the email system to have people call in or, in essence, email in questions to try and deal with public access.
Mr. President?
Yep, who's, who's Counselor? Who said that?
Counselor Graney.
Counselor Graney, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you, sir?
Doing well, thank you.
Look, when I filed that, that, that order several weeks ago, I was hoping we were going to find a place. It's been two, two weeks, three weeks now, like a gymnasium at Hoyok High School or someplace like that, or the cafeteria at Dean Tech, so that we could have public access. These are very critical issues to the public, and we need to have public input in them. And I concur very, very adamantly that we should have public access to these meetings, and I agree with Counselor Bacon. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So Counselor Murphy, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I would agree as well. I mean, I think, and with what the governor announced today and potentially opening up some other things, are we talking about potentially having our meetings allowing spacing and things along that lines, like Counselor Graney has said, in a larger location where we can have public access? I mean, I think that would be, obviously, we want to follow the health protocols, but I do think as soon as that is feasible, I think that is the way we should go, because I do think this is somewhat a restrictive access in turn. And people who want to make a comment, whether they would have come or not, obviously, who knows, but think as soon as we can get back and get back under a healthy environment, whether it's a city hall auditorium, a gymnasium, Dean Tech, whatever, I think we should look to doing that. So I kind of agree with Counsel Bacon and Counsel Graney on that.
Yeah, we are, Counsel Murphy, we are trying to do that. The governor just came out with a set of information today, of which, having looked through it as quickly as I could, there still is a limitation from what I saw on no more than ten people. So that's where we're gonna have to get guidance as to how to achieve that, when you have a thirteen-member board and then inviting people in to speak. I'm all for public access. We've tried to do that here. As we stated when we first started this, the chief of police had a very serious problem about opening up this forum into the hacking slash bombing, as they call it. I didn't, I didn't give it that title, of which I addressed that with you guys prior to any of this starting. So to me, I'd rather be down at city hall. I don't want to be sitting in any room on a computer. That's not how we conduct business. But to get certain things going, this is what we were offered through the state. So that's where we stand as far as, you know, opening up and where we can go from here. You know, I'll keep reaching out to legal as well as state members to give us that guidance. Counselor Lisi, I see your hand up.
Yes, very briefly, I want to say again that I met last week with the emergency management group that is creating a protocol for online meetings and public access. And as far as I understand, that email, which is publiccomment@hoyok.org, is a way for anyone who wants to get access to the Zoom meeting can have access, direct access to the Zoom meeting. They can't participate in our meeting, but they can be on their computer, listening to us, and also in the waiting room, and then allowed to speak at some point in time if they wish to speak. The same thing goes for the phone number that you could dial into the meeting with. The Zoom meetings that we're having should be, moving forward, published with a phone number for people to call in. Again, they don't get to participate. They don't get to have a little box like the rest of us do, where we're actually like in the meeting, but they can be in a waiting room and they can actually add comment to the meeting that way. And again, I think that in terms of the other access issues, this meeting is being broadcast on channel fifteen, so anyone with a television and a basic cable package should be able to access this meeting as well as streaming either online via your, you know, device, whether that's a phone and iPad or other tablet or a computer. So there seems to be a lot of avenues for people to have access and also for people to comment. Thank you.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting until we can post the remaining two agenda items with public access information, similar to what Counselor Lisi just described.
Second. I hear a second, so.
Mr. President?
Counselor McGivern?
This is not debatable.
It is debatable.
The motion to adjourn is absolutely debatable. Motion to table is not. Counselor McGivern?
Mr. President, it's a sad day when we have to use rules and parliamentary procedure to accomplish business that we have traditionally done. I agree, it would be nice to be in the chambers and be physically present with everyone, but tonight and tomorrow, we cannot meet this kind of laws mandated social distancing restrictions, regardless of how many of us are together. And to me, the health of each of you and anyone who wishes to have access to our meetings has to come first. Not, not political analyzing and political maneuvering to try to get rid of a couple of important grants that are in front of us this evening. This number, item number three is a grant that has a time-sensitive issue. The mayor was good enough to put it on the agenda. Sergeant Hart is here to speak about it. If there's objections, if you want to report it in committee, that's fine, but I think everyone should hear it out, including the public, that a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars have been made available to the Hooyok Police and Fire Departments for the purposes of purchasing PPE equipment and other equipment related to the COVID- nineteen crisis. Now, this point of order is fine for discussion, but Counsel Bacon's complaint will get its due vetting in the June second meeting, when it's going to be on the agenda. This city council will have the chance to try to resolve her points, which are well-taken and should be well-taken. But doing it this evening for the purpose of trying to table these two items is nothing but politics, and I object to that.
Mr. President?
Counsel Bacon?
The speaker referred to me, not my name, but definitely referred to me. I want to make it clear that I am not advocating for us to meet in person in violation of any safety considerations. What I am pressing for, which is what I said, and in May again, is for public access by the means that Counsel Lisi referred to. We all know that not everybody has a computer or access to Zoom or even cable TV. And there are a variety of other pathways, which Counsel Lisi very adequately described, which we can right this minute make available to the public. But if we want to talk about political manipulation, let's just talk about item two. So let's not go there. What I'm talking about is good government and access to the government by the people that we represent. Thank you.
So the motion was to adjourn. I heard a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call.
I heard one roll call.
Second. Second. Roll call.
All right, I hear three roll calls. So the motion is to adjourn. There's been three requests for a roll call. I'll go in order, because we haven't pulled anything for a name. So if you vote yes, you're voting to adjourn. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
No.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Hernandez?
No.
Counselor Leahy? Counselor Leahy, can you hear me? Counselor Leahy? No. Counselor Bor Martinez? She still can't hear me. Counselor Lisi?
No.
Counselor McGee, no. Counselor McGivern?
No.
Counselor Murphy?
No.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
No.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
I'll go back, because I, it might be an audio issue. Counselor Leahy? Counselor Bor Martinez? One, two, three, four to adjourn. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, in the negative, so the motion does not carry. Back to the first, which was to go out of order to item three. Was there a second to that one?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Order three, order that in accordance to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the city council hereby accept the provisions of the BJA fiscal year twenty Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Fund program grant in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and three dollars.
Your motion to receive, pass the first reading.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, I was informed of this last week. It's a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, one hundred and three that, as you stated, grant that comes to us from the Department of Justice, being received by the Hooyok Police Department, which can be used for the purchasing of PPE equipment and other equipment related to the COVID- nineteen crisis. Sergeant Hart is with us tonight to explain, there is no match, to explain that they have put in a list of things that have been approved by the Department of Justice for which the city can purchase and to give us an idea of what the, what the time constraints are with the, I believe it's the end of the fiscal year. Needs to get through purchasing and get through the purchasing process itself. So I would ask to suspend the rules to ask our invited guest, Sergeant Hart, to speak on this.
Motion is to suspend the rules, allow Mr. Hart to answer questions. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, remember, some of you are on mute, so just making sure on the call. So with that, Officer Hart, Sergeant Hart, that is, we turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So thank you very much for taking us tonight and expediting this much-needed grant and for help keeping us and the city from doing any type of deficit spending. This will definitely help in that regard for this fiscal year. With that, I have a laundry list of items that we're looking to purchase, not only for us, but also for the fire department. First is decontamination tents. Another item is hurricane sprayers, which are fodgers with decontamination. These, these items will be used by us in the fire department to help decontaminate holes and areas in a quick amount of time, opposed to using hand wipes and stuff. So saving us time for getting our vehicles back on the road. We're also going to be purchasing two emergency message trailers that are positioned in any entrance and egress areas of the city to notify incoming public and outgoing public on emergency messages for PPE and, and updates on, on the Corona. We're also going to be picking up a pickup truck. Our pickup truck now is over fifteen years old, and this will take some of the burden off the city from purchasing another police vehicle, so we will be having a pickup truck. Another item, we're going to be picking up some UV light portable room sanitizers. These sanitizers can sanitize a room in ten minutes of fifteen by fifteen room, which will be useful in our cells and our booking areas and offices, and they can be mobile and utilized throughout various areas as well as the fire stations. We're going to be purchasing some clear face shields, cloth masks, the N ninety-five masks, some thermal temperature guns. We're also going to be getting some mobile access subscriptions. So in the event that any of our command staff or much-needed staff needs to work from home, we'll have that capability. In addition, we're going to be purchasing a zero electric police motorcycle, so we can utilize that in our reservoirs, railroad tracks, easy to get to. It will be an on-road and off-road vehicle. I know Counselor Bartley, you're probably excited about that. Another thing is, our last item is going to be a mobile police camera that we're going to be purchasing.
Any?
The items.
Any questions for Sergeant Hart? Counselor Leahy? And you're on mute, Counsel Leahy.
Thank you. Sorry about. Sergeant Hart, are there any things that I can't vote on?
No, you should be able to vote on this grant.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to get there.
Counselor Murphy, and you're on mute.
There you go.
Yeah, Sergeant Hart, first of all, thank you for your, for your efforts. I know you're always out there trying to get good things. Couple of questions. Number one, on the decontamination tents, is that one tent, multiple tents?
Right now, we have it in for a twenty by forty tent. However, depending on, once the fire chief and the police chief get together, whatever plan they come up with, we can always amend that and do again in our, our grant to get multiple ten by ten tents. So it depends on their, their vision and mission for implementing what types of decontamination tents they want.
So am I correct in assuming that a fire vehicle would go into the tent after it's been somewhere and within a certain period of time, it would be contaminated?
No, this is, this is more geared for personnel than it is for vehicles.
Okay, okay. All right, and then the other thing was the fifteen by fifteen for room sanitizer?
Yes, these are portable UV lights, kind of similar to the old portable heaters, but they transmit UV light, which can sanitize a fifteen by fifteen area within ten minutes.
And do you have an idea how much that, each one of those cost?
Those cost approximately five hundred dollars apiece. And we're looking to get about ten of them and splitting them up between us and the fire department.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just also thinking future reference potentially for schools, so. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone further for Sergeant Hart? Oh, wait, Counsel McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just ask if the council would consider passing the first reading and the second reading to adopt it. Obviously, it's some wonderful equipment. I want to thank Sergeant Hart for getting the grant. I want to thank the Department of Justice for submitting or putting forward such a generous grant for the city of Hoyok. And I can't think of a better use than what Sergeant Hart has described this evening.
All right, so, oh, wait, Counsel McGivern, sorry. So if there's no further discussion, motion is to pass the first reading. If you're on mute, unmute. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk will call, I'll call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the grant. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Hernandez?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Bor Martinez? Counselor Lisi?
Yes.
Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
With your vote, you approve the BJA grant. Item number two, we're going back up. Order that in accordance to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the city council hereby accept the provisions of the Bar Foundation Clean Energy Grant in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Motion to receive and pass the first reading?
Second.
Motion is to receive and pass the first reading under discussion. Counsel McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start by apologizing and explaining the reason that this grant is before us this evening. At our last city council meeting, after this grant was vetted in the finance committee, the item up, we had a very healthy discussion.
Please unmute everyone, Ryan. Except for Counsel McGivern.
On the aspects and perspectives of receiving this grant, as we know, a lot of that debate centered around the use of neighbor to neighbor. I didn't fault anybody for positions. I don't fault anybody for positions now. This is a very emotional, a very charged issue that is before the city of Hoyok. In the finance committee, the motion was made that the recommendation would be to deny to the full city council. Three members of the finance committee voted to do that. Two members of the finance committee voted against denial. When it was received by the full city council, the committee report was made a motion to adopt the committee report, which means the recommendation was to deny. The president properly did the first reading and properly let it go to the second reading. At the second reading, you know, after debate, and I'm not asking anyone to change their position, I'm not asking anyone to debate this anymore. I'm just asking for a little personal recognition here, not recognition, a little personal indulgence on what happened after the debate and after the vote at our last meeting and see if we can rectify something. There was no, the procedures were, what didn't happen was the vote failed on a six to seven vote. The six to seven vote was, the vote was the motion to deny. Therefore, the vote failed to deny the actual motion, the actual grant itself. We had a little bit of discussion after that. I recognize I said, you know, what I did. I asked the city court twice as to the vote itself being six, seven, seven, six. And in my mistake, and I take full responsibility for this, was my mistake was I read it as seven, six to deny. And that was only my, and only my mistake. Mr. President called it correctly. We know that we needed to pass that evening a two-thirds vote regardless. But if, if I was, in my own frame of mind, if I was reading the vote correctly, I would have asked for reconsideration and to table the motion until the next city council meeting. I also noted that that evening, and I'll note this evening, that the Bar Foundation was getting ready to rescind the grant, and I felt we were out of time. But I did not make that motion to reconsider after we did not adopt the committee report. I did not make the motion, which would have been, the purpose would have been to pass the first reading and to table it. The reason is, and this does not happen, but it does happen, is we have, we know that appropriation and expenditure, grant is more of an expenditure than it is an appropriation, have to have two readings by the full city council on different evenings or a two-thirds majority to pass on the same night. For obvious reasons, the Mass General Laws tell us appropriations and grants passed with a simple majority. Seven would be a simple majority. I don't know if seven people are willing to vote in favor of accepting this grant And it was my mistake for not allowing us to get to that position, again, by reconsidering and tabling the matter for another evening. I was questioned by by the mayor's office. I was questioned by the law department. I was questioned by Marcus Merrill, the department head who received this grant. A couple of city councillors talked about procedure, and that is the gist of what happened two weeks at the last city council meeting, excuse me. And what I'm trying to do tonight is to rectify my mistake. It is not reconsidering an item that passed. What happened is done. This is the resubmission of the Bar Grant by the Bar Foundation. They've agreed to give the city one more shot at accepting this. It is actually the same grant, but it's essentially starting over. Do we need to re-debate it? I don't think so. We've all voiced some very emotional reasons for why we're voting which way. Some of us are voting to accept reluctantly, but at the same time, I think we've all come out and said that. I'm asking that tonight, we just receive it, pass the first reading if there are seven votes, table it for the next city council meeting, and at that point, we can decide if we're going to accept the grant or not in whatever conditions we want to place on accepting the grant. I apologize again. I know this is putting everybody on the spot on a very emotional debate. But I think in fairness to the seven councillors, I should have picked this up at the last meeting. I just asked that we do this tonight and wait till the next city council meeting to have the final vote and the final second reading.
Counselor Bacon's hand is up. Remember to unmute.
Thank you, Mr. President. This matter warrants continued debate. I don't think it's fair to say that because we had debate at a prior meeting and the matter was definitively voted, and to say that somebody made a procedural error to then come back, you know, this this is kind of vintage politic maneuvering. And we all knew what the votes were, and any one of us sitting at the meeting that night could have asked for a vote to reconsider, but nobody did. We knew what the votes were. So here we are again. Nothing has changed, except that once again, we do not have access for the public. This is a very hot issue. I'm hearing about it. We do not have support for this grant from the H G and E. And the stated goal of the grant is to take gas out of Hoyok as a goal in the grant. And so if we're going to do a do-over, this needs to be posted with public access. And I would further add that committees of five can meet in chambers with proper social distancing. People can sit in the hallway and properly social distance and come into the chambers and be able to participate in this matter. We all know there's a lot of public interest in this matter, and I find this a blatant abuse of the open meeting law. There's no getting around this one.
Counselor Bartley's next. Counselor Anderson Burgos, I saw your hand up. You'll be next.
Yeah, just a point over than all the questions. So, Mr. President, if we vote on this tonight, what's the chair's ruling? How many votes is required to pass?
You would still need two-thirds, and I'll read the rule because I received the emails and the phone calls. We said that you needed nine votes to pass a matter of which the phone calls were me where I read the rules wrong. I was wrong. I will read you Rule thirty-five that the city council rules that we adopted. Any ordinance, order, resolution, or vote involving the appropriation or expenditure of money to the amount which may exceed two hundred dollars shall require its passage, passage, the affirmative vote of a majority of all the members of the city council. Every such ordinance, order, resolution, or vote shall be twice, shall be read twice with an interval of at least three days between the two readings being, before being finally passed. And the vote has to be taken by a whole call, provided, however, that upon and after the written recommendation of the mayor, the city council may pass such order, ordinance, resolution, or vote on the same day by a two-thirds yea or nay vote, City Charter, Section twenty-two. Therefore, when the order came to the city council, the first reading took place that night. The second reading took place that night as well. So therefore, in order to pass two times, two readings on the same day, you need a two-thirds vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Just through the present to the finance chair, why do you want to lay it on the table now? If, as you said, we don't need further debate, why don't we, why don't you call for a vote right? I'm ready to vote on it now, Mr. Chairman. Call for a vote right now, and let's vote on it. What would what would be your argument to lay it on the table tonight?
Hold on.
This is this is to the chair, to the finance chair.
Hold on, there's a question. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Bartley, it the, I think I explained that the reason to lay it on the table this evening is because to pass both readings this evening would would require a two-thirds vote of the city council by our rules. And I believe you'll find some language within the Charter to expenditures. Unfortunately, tho- those are good rules. You know, we should have two readings of any finance expenditure of any appropriation that comes before us. Example, the budget came in this evening, we passed the first reading. Now, we're going to have budget hearings. At the end of the budget hearings, according to the president's agenda, we will have a point where we can pass the second reading if we so choose. That's the, again, there's a little difference because during this forty-five days, we have line item control. During the course of the year on transfers, appropriations, and grants, which are considered expenditures because of the language of the the grant that we, the motion of the grant that we use, we can't have two readings in the same evening unless two-thirds of the people agree. As I pointed out, at the last city council meeting, two-thirds did not agree with the passing and acceptance of the Bar Grant for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. However, in the past, what we would do in these cases is is laid on, the first reading passes, laid on the table, and go forward, you know, at the second meeting at the next regular scheduled city council meeting. This is a historical thing that goes back to before my time. This is a time when the Board of Alderman used to do almost everything with a two-thirds vote, and no one knew why. There was a similar thing that was happening within the ordinance committee back when before the days when they when they eliminated some of the five motions that you had to make to pass the city law to make it more streamlined. The ordinance committee had difficulty passing something in the same evening. At that time, Counselor Joyce realized that if you have a simple majority, not a two-thirds majority, you can table something and wait to do the next reading accordingly. We've done this before with the financial appropriations that have come before us. I, again, it was the, and again, Counselor Bartley, as you know, in the original Finance Committee, which we did listen to the public for an hour and a half, you you and you made the motion to deny. You asked me if that was the correct wording, and I said, that is the recommendation of what the committee is going to make to the full city council. I understood it would be up to the full city council on what motion they would act on. I already explained what we acted on. In my mind, I reversed that. I should have asked for reconsideration for what I'm doing this evening to give the simple majority a chance to pass and accept the grant. Again, I don't know if the seven people are going to vote in favor to, you know, to do that, but I think it deserves a shot to to the to the foundation. I think it deserves a shot to the city for the possibility of using this money.
So, if I may, Mr. President, and I'll still go through the chair to the finance chair. You've already said that this was an imminent, you said it before at the prior meeting, May fifth. This had to be voted on immediately. Now you're saying something, and you said it again tonight, but now you're saying something different, that we can table this tonight. But you also admitted that there's no more reason for debate because you don't even want to send it to the Finance Committee. The sole reason you're doing this is to avoid the two-thirds threshold to pass because you want to have seven votes to pass it. That's the sole reason, Joe. I mean, I appreciate the background, but if you're going to go into background, let's let's not forget how we voted on our committee in February. We went to the full city council. You came back to all of us, and we gave deference to you as the chair that time. And none of us signed the jacket out of respect and admiration for you, Mr. Chairman. And we sent it back to committee for you. We had zero committee hearings on that. We took it up May fifth, again, in deference to you, Mr. Chairman. So that's twice it came before a full city council. That's two times now, if we're counting at home, and we voted it down. We denied it. Now we've got a third bite at the apple, Mr. Chairman, and we're not voting on it tonight? Do you not think this is somewhat outrageous, Mr. Chairman, at this point? I mean, I think we're ready to, I think we're ready to vote tonight. I mean, I'm, I'll make the motion if you won't make it, but I'll let everybody speak. But we should, we should have a vote on this this evening. It's an imminent issue, as you said, from the Bar Foundation. They need, they need a vote right away. We took the vote May fifth. We would have, we would have voted on it in in March if you would let us sign the jacket, but we but we didn't. So this is now three times before the full city council. At some point, but but you you don't want it today. You want it to go back to June for a fourth time. That, talk about historical precedent. Let's forget Mark Joyce, and let's forget, let's forget Ray Fairman and all the legends of the city council. Let's talk about tonight. Let's take a vote. Three times is enough. Let's take a vote tonight.
May I, Mr. President?
Yep.
Mr. President?
Hold on, Counselor Graney, Counselor Graney, Counselor McGivern has the floor.
Thank you. Counselor Bartley, I recognize, and as you and I talked, I know and understand it's a seven to six. It looks like it's a seven to six vote. Those are difficult votes because it's split down the middle. At the beginning of the last meeting, I said, I won't fault anybody for the position they're taking, you know, and I'm taking a position that I'm reluctant about because of the nature of what comes with the grant. But that doesn't mean I want to throw the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars out the window. The first meeting, and I thank you and I appreciate that you allowed that to go back to committee as did the other members that did the full city council that evening. And to allow us for, that was at the request of the department head for some future information that was brought forward, some future debate. I, you know, and we did have that future debate, and we actually, that's when we had the public comment came in and a ton of people came in to talk that evening, as you know. This evening, I can say it again and again, but this evening, it's it's a simple majority by Mass General Law to pass an appropriation. We have a fiduciary responsibility to allow that to happen if the simple majority votes are there. The people who represent their constituents, whether they vote yes tonight or vote no tonight, have a right to take that vote. We have a right to live up to what Mass General Law allows to live, to vote, and that's a simple majority as long as we do the two separate readings on separate evenings. In the past, when we figured this out, I had asked that we would start receiving items of appropriations and transfers and like we did the budget this evening, and calling the first receiving and referring to committee and actually doing the first reading. But I didn't, I didn't get, the response of the city council at the time was not in favor of that. They felt that, you know, we can do, you know, if it takes two readings, we can't do them on one evening. We can do what I've outlined this evening. Pass the first reading, wait at least three days or wait till the next full scheduled council meeting, and then try to pass the acceptance on that meeting itself. Everything you said is accurate. I agree, you know, I'm not not denying. I respect your position. I'm glad you respect my position. I'm just asking to pass the first reading this evening, get it down the road so we can talk about it and see if a simple majority wants to accept the grant. If a simple majority doesn't want to accept the grant, it's a done deal.
Next was Counselor Anderson Burgos, then Counselor Graney.
Yeah, so I've been looking at the grant over and over and over because I wanted to make sure before I made my points tonight. First of all, you know, I just want to mention that, you know, the the grant does mention stakeholders. That means businesses, it means city council, it means agencies like Hoyok Gas and Electric, and its residents, Hoyok residents. This is one step in a com, in a conversation that will continue to have our input. We're taking one step with someone else's money to move a conversation we will need to have. And I just wanted to point out that the transition to using more renewable energy is happening anyway. The grant is an opportunity to help Hoyok get information to help our city move more successfully through that transition. So why would we turn down funds that will help us understand the best way to move forward, to move the city forward? That's my, that's what I can't grasp. I don't know why we want to turn this down, but it's so important for the future of Hoyok. I'm telling you right now, the best interest is for Hoyok. That's it, thank you.
Next was Counselor Graney.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, thanks for recognizing me. This issue has been before the Finance Committee twice or three times. I'm not sure before. It was a recommendation coming out of that committee to deny. It's come before the full board twice, and the grant was unaccepted, was not accepted by the full council. The the city is really a, an industrial city, and I don't have a crystal ball, but I certainly do question the future of the city and manufacturing in the city without a healthy gas supply. I don't know what manufacturers or or what 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 basic businesses and residents would be willing to relocate into Hoyok. I don't know all that information. But I suspect from from talking to some people that it would make Hoyok less attractive not to have the gas, not, you know, for manufacturing purposes, for business purposes. We've already lost a number of residents. We're using propane gas for the for the new houses, which is a dangerous source of energy, as we all, we plainly know. This, this has been before the council on numerous, numerous occasions. It's been denied, and I don't believe that it would be appropriate again to take it up again, and I believe it should be put to bed. Thank you very much.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer a motion to deny.
Bacon?
Motion was to deny. It was seconded. Still in the debate, Counselor Bacon, or?
Yes, we have, we have debated this matter. We were told that it was time sensitive. We needed to act on it immediately. That is why the push was on that required the nine votes. Now, I was accused of playing politics tonight, and all I got to say is I'm beat out tenfold by some of the people on the Zoom meeting tonight in that regard. But what I will stand on is good process. And this is violating the open meeting law. It is also trying to undermine the process of committee, committee work, taking public input and coming to a decision. We're not just here to decide for the people. We're here to listen to the people and make decisions. So far, we've had meetings, meetings where the only people we can hear from are the people who want this to happen. And it's just flat out wrong. So our vote from the last meeting should stand for all the very same reasons, and it should even be doubled down on with this now, in my view, intentional disregard for access by the public.
Counselor McGivern was next, then Counselor Lisi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to address the, again, we'd love to all be back down in the chambers or upstairs in the gym or someplace where we could safely meet together. Committees cannot meet under these standards. There's more than five people, there's five people on the committee, but there's thirteen members of the city council that have a right to be at a committee meeting. Our committees are study groups. Our committees vet an issue and get it back to the full city council to take, make the final decision. We cannot safely meet together as a group of thirteen under the standards of the Commonwealth at the moment. That day is coming. I, I mean, I hope it's quicker than, than, as everybody said this evening, as quickly as possible. This is not violating the open meeting law. This agenda was posted properly. The Commonwealth recognizes these times. They allow for the flexibility of how meetings take place. We are doing it by the best regulations that we possibly can. I've stated my point at every meeting in public since we've twice had this, as you stated, in the Finance Committee. Twice we've had it before the full city council. I've stated my point clearly. I listened to everybody else's points. We debated back and forth, you know, waiting to hear something.
You know, waiting to hear something new, that would be great, but I think we've all made our points at least twice on this issue. Yes, it's procedural. Yes, it's proper. It's been done before. It's the way that our rules, our charter and our rules read. It's, again, we, we have to abide by the mass general laws because our charter is nothing but a covenant that connects us to mass general laws. City government, municipal government does not exist without a covenant with the state, without the state allowing us to exist. We have to abide by that. I've, I've been told that, you know, we're, we're out of order, that Robert's rules weren't followed. If you read our rules, we only refer to Robert's rules if our rules don't apply, and our rules is according to the charters do apply. And the most important rule that is not written is common sense. You know, it's, it's, it's a numbers game, and yes, we have to be able to count the numbers. I'm sorry it's seven to six. I, I think I'm, you know, the debate has taken place. Again, it does not require a public hearing. It requires public access to be able to listen to our debate. We have provided that at every step of the way, including bending a rule to allow public, to, uh, the public to participate in the Finance Committee, at which point, as I've stated, we had 12, 13 guests talk that evening as long as they wanted to. And yes, I know it's controversial, and yes, I realize it's a difficult vote, but again, if we can pass the first reading, all I'm asking after that is to lay it on the table and we can get into the Finance Committee meeting because we have some very good, some very important guests from the Department of Local Services and DLR and some, and from our Milent and Hampton, our outside auditor, to talk about finances in this city and then to lead into some proposals in the ordinance committee. But again, last time, can we just pass the first reading and if the votes are there, lay it on the table?
Counselor Lacy.
I was just going to ask if we had passed the first reading before we had this discussion. I, I was unclear whether that vote actually took place or not.
We, we did not.
Okay. On that motion then.
So, uh, Counselor Murphy for the first time, as we always know, someone hasn't spoken yet. Counselor Murphy.
You hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Okay. Uh, again, this has been something, and I've kind of sort of been the person in between everything here in terms of my views, but I, again, I'm going to come back a few things. Number one, uh, it's disappointing to be dealing with this again today after we dealt with it two weeks ago. I mean, that is, uh, something that I, no, should not have happened. And I, with whatever the rationale behind it and all that, I respect that, but this is not the way it should be done. And if it is going to be done that way, then it should be done and kind of started the process over again. Uh, my biggest concern is we have a chance to do something together, but we're doing it, we're, we're trying to do it against each other. And I've said this before, uh, you know, I, I think Hoyoke Gas and Electric should be a direct participant in the grant. Not that they're gonna override and, and, but they're gonna have some input. They're gonna be there. We're talking about what kind of energy we use in all of the various neighborhoods. Who knows that better than Hoyoke Gas and Electric? Every one of those, they know if they're getting gas bills, electric bills, whatever the case might be. My concern would be, and my concern has always been, that we're gonna get a very one-sided view, and people can tell me, no, but you look at what the goals are, they're very one-sided, and I'm not against the ultimate goal of clean energy. But I am for a goal of clean energy based on rational economic decisions, based on what we have currently. And I think both parties working together, including the BAR Foundation, including neighbor to neighbor, including the Hoyoke Gas and Electric, can come up and provide us with a blueprint that not only provides better energy, uh, in terms of, uh, environmental issues, but also does it in a reasonable manner that does, does not negatively impact the city of Hoyoke. And I still think that we have not done that, and I, and I know the BAR Foundation said they're not willing to do that. I would encourage us to send it back to them one more time. Realize that you're telling us the Hoyoke Gas and Electric is a good utility company. We want them to be part of this process. They've got data that you're going to use. They've got expertise that would obviously cooperate with you in terms of getting a project manager. Uh, and would put us in a position where when we do get a report, we've got the pros and cons built into the report. We know that if we do this, this is what our economic cost is gonna be. This is what environment, environmental or health benefit is gonna be. I mean, I think there's potential benefits, but this is not the way to do it. And, and, and to do this and keep going back and forth, I mean, we're not creating a community. We're creating a we and a they, and I want us to be a community, and I think that's a very simple process for me to get the gas and electric as part of this contract, the BAR Foundation. I'm not against what they want to do, but I want to make sure we do it economically viable for the city of Hoyoke as well as environmentally viable. So again, I, I, if we were to send this to committee, I would be in favor of that. I cannot vote for it tonight based on what I now know, uh, is, is there. And, and again, I think we have a chance to do this the right way, and I encourage the BAR Foundation to recognize that a community working together is a lot better than a community divided. Thank you.
Counselor Hernandez for the first time. I see Counselor Sullivan, I'll get you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to clarify and add that, um, I have been elected by my constituents of Ward 4 to represent them. And I tend to differ with what other counselors have said here tonight on that we are not including them, um, in our, um, voting process. I have listened to my constituents. They have reached out to me and they have expressed their sincere thoughts on how disappointed they were and how this whole process went the first time and how it would be so irresponsible on, on our behalf not to accept such a grant that's only gonna move us forward in, in the first step to explore this avenue. It would be so irresponsible for our future generations for us not to explore clean energy, renewable energy for this city. We owe it to the future generations to hand over to them a earth that they can live in and that they can stand, sustain their livability here. So I know that I'm here for the people and I am listening to them, and that's why I support this, this grant. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, fir- first of all, I think this putting it back for another vote when it's already failed, failed in committee, right? It's failed the first time around. We already know we've got seven people in favor, and all this is doing is setting it up to make it pass on the third try because you know you've already got the seven votes there. So there's no question in my mind about that piece of this. The, the other thing, I totally agree with everybody, our need to get off of fossil fuels, but everything that's been foot forward so far by neighbor to neighbor has set this city backwards on that path. Backwards on that path, and we're gonna include people that have put us backwards on that path and, and have them be the guiding influence in this? I've got a horrible problem with that. All right? The, the, the major, one of the major players in this, let's not forget, is gonna be OPEC. Right? We've heard that from Marcos, right? They would be administering some of this grant, participating in it, right? Our, our Office of Plan Economic Development is already overwhelmed with the problems of blight, poverty, and unemployment in this city. Addiction and homelessness and rampant adding energy, oh, and also managing, being on the emergency response for the COVID virus. Now we're gonna add energy transition to their mission while we have proven professionals, proven professionals in this, in, in this city at Hoyoke Gas and Electric that can do this. I would support this grant wholeheartedly if the mayor and the chief of staff or OPEC would go back to the BAR Foundation and make one change, and that would be to make Hoyoke Gas and Electric, right, play the leading role in this grant. Then I'd be fine with it.
You're here.
Uh, I see. Counselor Vacan, is, is your hand still up or, okay, just making sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Hand is, is your hand still up or no, or? Okay. With that, there's no one else for questions. The motion was seconded. The motion was to deny. All those in favor?
What is this?
The first motion was to deny and it was seconded.
Deny what?
Motion on the floor was to pass the first reading.
Right, and then Counselor Vacan made a motion to deny it.
I know, but this is a, an expenditure that requires two readings, so that motion is out of order.
That is true. So back to the original, which is?
I'm gonna make a motion to refer to Finance Committee.
Second.
So the motion is to refer to Finance that was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Counselor Murphy, do you have a question or prior to that?
Just to comment on that, again, I think, if I can.
Go ahead.
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm gonna go to Finance Committee. I would like Mayor, uh, and, and staff to look at talking to the BAR Foundation again and, and, and specifically, and, and we've talked about this, specifically putting the gas in the industry as part of this grant process and as a, as a key component of it. Uh, and that, if that were there, as Counsel, and I would gladly, if that came out and two weeks came by, uh, I would gladly put my vote in, in, in favor of this grant. Uh, I just think right now we don't have that information. Uh, we've been told they won't, but we also were told last two weeks ago, if we didn't do it then, it wasn't gonna pass, and now we're back here again, and then we're talking about another two weeks. So let's send it to committee. I'm asking if it goes to committee, that the mayor specifically reach out to the BAR Foundation, that there's potential support, that we'd like to have our utility company as part of the process of continuing to develop an economic and environmental energy plan for the city of Hoyoke in conjunction with the BAR Foundation. Uh, and then if we got that commitment, I think this would pass and people would be, the city could become much more a community instead of a divided community. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Couldn't agree more with, uh, Counselor Murphy. A, a great suggestion. Every financial order we have, go, virtually everyone goes to, goes to Finance Committee. Clearly, there is no longer any exigency, despite what the Finance Chair said the last meeting, um, there is no exigency to move this along. Now, we have an opportunity to hear firsthand from the BAR Foundation because we had no correspondence from them relative to this question. We had the, we had the assertion of the OPEC Director, but I haven't seen anything in writing relative to our suggestion to work with, directly with HG&E, and I, and I want to second what my friend Mike Sullivan said. If this, if HG&E was even mentioned wi- within, within this proposal, I'd be held for it. But the proposal is dead silent on HG&E. There is nothing. Can you imagine that, you know, the rhetoric tonight, oh, green energy and, and saving our future of our kids, and I, I love it. I, I, I'm all for that. But to leave out the gas and electric? To leave out the experts? To have non-experts despite how well-intentioned they are, move this along? It, it makes no sense. So why don't we get behind this as a community? Which I, I would love to. So I want to hear directly from the BAR Foundation. There, there's, there's no reason whatsoever why we can't have a, a robust hearing in finance. I, I'm sure the Finance Chair would agree with that because there, there's, there's no reason to leave this to city council now. I mean, BAR Foundation doesn't need an answer right away. So let's have a discussion as a community, and so I, I hope we can move that question. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counselor, wait, wait, wait. Counselor Tom for the first time. Counselor Tom for the first time.
I, I thought that the vote was, uh, for to pass the first reading.
Yes, and then they said to send it.
Shouldn't that be voted on first?
That was seconded. You'd have to vote on the second one. Okay, send it to committee. Counselor Grady, I heard you.
Yes, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Murphy and I agree with Counselor Bartley. The other, the other, uh, experts that I'd like to see at the table in the Finance Committee is the representatives of the Hoyoke Gas and Electric so we can hear firsthand from them. Because I think, uh, uh, we owe them as, as, as city counselors and as long-term members of the city to solicit their input to see exactly where they stand on this issue. Thank you very much.
Counselor McGivern, is your hand up?
Yes, Mr. President. Just to speak on the motion to refer to committee.
What was that?
I want to speak on the motion to refer to committee.
Yep. Go ahead, Counselor McGivern.
Points, uh, well taken. First, Counselor Murphy, um, although I do agree, um, that, you know, we, I would love to see the BAR Foundation rethink this. Um, just a reminder, Finance Committee already asked that that would take place. And it was a good two-month period that Marcus Guerrero talked with the BAR Foundation about rewording the grant, about rethinking the way the grant would be, um, implemented. Um, the, the, the group that is doing the actual analysis of what this grant is trying to accomplish is gonna be in collaboration with the gas and electric. We had the gas and electric before the Finance Committee. We had people from the public speak before the Finance Committee. We've done all this. We can accomplish that. If you want to give the mayor one more shot to talk to BAR, I'm all in favor of that, but we can still pass the first reading and tell BAR, we're ready to, we're ready to vote on this by June 2nd and get an answer to see if they will once again listen to good points. Why don't we let the gas and electric lead this? But that's, that's not the point. You know, the point is, as much as we tried this, it's BAR Foundation's money. They're one of the largest foundations on the East Coast. It's money that we can put to good use. I, I didn't want to say this, but one of the reasons that I, I favor this grant is what it, what it's gonna look at is the people who are on gas now, like myself and Jenny. You know, we could reduce the energy efficiency of the way we use gas, freeing up more gas for other people to use. And if people who, you know, we, what I'm saying is we could do better in installation. We could use some new windows to better insulate the house. Some of our insulation in the attic is old and in the crawl space. Those are things that this is talking about is informing people that we need to do as consumers, is better use the product that we purchase. Um, I, I mean, I, I'd be happy, you know, to, to learn better ways, but I know that there are good ways out there to do just that. Let's pass the first reading. If the mayor so wishes, give him a shot to talk to BAR Foundation. If it's not satisfactory by June 2nd, what the answer is, we still have a chance to shoot this up or down.
Counselor Leahy, I saw you waving your hand or? You're unmute. There you go.
You hear me okay?
Gotcha.
All right. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to say that the fact that we're all debating this, having a conversation about this is, is a great thing. Uh, because, um, I think that we all have the same attitude that we want to limit potentially trying to pull up fossil fuels. I think that's a fantastic thing. Um, and I think that, uh, our Hoyoke Gas and Electric continues to make incredible progress. I mean, at one point, I, I think it was Counselor Sullivan said, uh, they used to call the Hoyoke Water Park where they had a dam, uh, two dams actually. First dam fell down, but they continue to make great progress. And this is a group that, uh, I quite frankly think is the best gas and electric, uh, in the world, led by the best people. Um, these are the people that I trust. These are the people that, um, you can go to and get solid questions. Now, I think that I'm gonna vote for this to go back to committee and having a representative from the BAR, um, Association, uh, Foundation come and they would, uh, and I would recommend, uh, the person that's in, that's in, uh, that's in the paperwork that we have, uh, Shawna Cleveland. Um, any decision that needs to be made, whether it's an outcome or whatnot, um, has to be run by her, so, by her if we could. Uh, or another person from, um, the BAR. I'd, I'd like to meet these people. Um, secondly, you know, one of the things that I think is important is to limit the amount of gas we have.
Someone, someone in the background, please, please mute. Counselor A, you're still on the floor.
Thank you. Uh, one of the first things I did when I purchased my house was I, uh, got off oil, um, and I utilized the Hoyoke Gas. They have a no interest loan, and it's a fantastic thing, and so I switched into gas. Now, I'm wondering, you know, how many counselors out there are on gas or are on oil or that sort of thing? But now you don't have the opportunity to get gas, uh, unless it's propane. It's interesting because propane is much dirtier than natural gas and delivered by diesel trucks, which is, um, interesting in itself. But nonetheless, I'm gonna vote for it to go back to committee. Um, I would like to see a representative come in and more, moreover, more importantly, to have the BAR grant or the BAR Foundation partner with the people who are trusted now in the city of Hoyoke Gas and Electric. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. President?
Yeah, Counselor Grady, yes, I hear.
Yes, I just want to remind this council that the city of Hoyoke has been a leader in energy, uh, for as long as I can remember, as you can, some of you may Uh for as long as I can remember, as you can, some of you may recall, I believe it was nineteen sixty-eight for the late sixties. That when the power went out on the eastern seaboard, there was only one city in the eastern seaboard that had power and lights, and that was Hoyok, Massachusetts. Complements of the Hoyok Water Power Company. So uh we have been a leader in energy for for many, many years. And it's our own companies that have done it.
Counselor Murphy wants to speak for a third time. All those in favor? I oppose. Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, and just, I mean, my goal in sending it to committee, and I know Counselor McGivern would like to get a vote today. But if we do that, we're basically saying you don't have to do anything, BAR Foundation, because in two weeks, we're gonna pass it. If we send this to committee. And I agree with Counselor Leahy, if we can get someone to come in and talk about it, we're not trying to stop this process. We're trying to make this process work better. And and work better for all of these citizens of Hoyok, both economically and environmentally and energy-wise. So. I mean, that's why I want to send it to committee, I think. And I think it gives the mayor also a time. Uh where he can come in and also meet with them and us uh in committee and uh. Put a program together that will end up potentially getting a united city council. And a united community. And I don't know why we would avoid doing that uh in order to get a vote. Thank you. I'm set, Todd.
I think Todd's frozen.
Counselor Lacy?
Thank you. Um I'd I'd like to move the question only because we are approaching um an hour delay. For the Joint Finance and Ordinance Committee meeting, for which we have two um state guests um set to speak. Um so if we can move the question, I think that's where we're at at this point.
Counselor has asked move, that was seconded. There's another joint meeting.
I didn't get the notice of another meeting.
It's the uh joint. And.
Finance and Ordinance Joint Committee Meeting.
Yes.
All right, so motion is to send to committee. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Chair is in doubt. Show of hands, those who wanted to go to committee, raise your hand. Counselor Granny, you want to go to committee, because I would say I can't see your hand.
Can we have a roll call?
Go do it. That'd be easier. Roll call.
Roll call.
All right, three members asked for a roll call. I'll go down the list. To send it to committee, Counselor Anderson Burgos.
No.
Counselor Bartley?
Dave, you're muted.
Everyone's on mute, so you have to come off mute, remember? To send it to committee. Yes, okay. Counselor Granny?
Yes.
Counselor Hernandez?
No.
Counselor Leahy? Counselor Bor Martinez?
No.
Counselor Lacy?
No.
Counselor McGee, no. Counselor McGivern?
No.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
No.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
That was seven, six, so it doesn't go to committee. What's the next, we're back to the original, which is.
No, Mr. President, I renew my motion to deny the grant. If we took up a secondary motion, then my motion can be taken up in order.
No, that's the second committee procedural. The other one is.
Well, hold on, hold on. Uh it.
The subsidiary motion.
Hasn't passed the first, and so you really can't deny it yet. So the, I'd say it's out of order. Um we're back to motion is to pass the first reading.
Yes.
Pass the first. And and then, is that where we are?
That's where we are.
So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call again. So motion is to pass the first reading, or call roll. Vote yes, you're voting. For the passage of the first reading, Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
No.
Counselor Granny?
No.
Counselor Hernandez?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy? Counselor Leahy? Counselor Labor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Lacy?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
No.
Counselor Sullivan?
No.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
No.
That would be seven, six.
Motion to table?
Motion to.
Motion was to table. Hold on, that was seconded. Cannot debate that.
Oh, this is so bogus.
This is, I'm just following the rules. So motion is to.
No, 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 this this is bogus. This is bogus. I agree. I mean, let's let's get serious here.
All right, so out of order, out of order. Motion is to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Oh.
Roll call, I heard one, two, three. Roll call is to table. Go down the list again. Counselor Anderson Burgos to table. Bartley?
No.
Counselor Granny?
No.
Hello?
We can't hear you, Todd.
Can you? Counselor Hernandez, your vote, yes or no?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
No.
Counselor Bor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Lacy?
Yes.
Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
No.
Counselor Sullivan?
No.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
No.
The item is tabled? Motion would be to. Motion is to adjourn. Counselor Leahy, wait, hold on. Counselor Leahy? Counselor Leahy?
Before, under discussion, um but I couldn't get your attention. Uh if you could just indulge me, how many uh votes? Uh was last committee missing? Because one of the uh downstairs down here, I'm not gonna mention the counselor's name. Uh but one person will say that uh their.
We, I can't hear anything.
Somebody has a a phone and a and a and a computer on.
No, but we we haven't been able to hear Counselor Leahy the whole time.
Table, Counselor Leahy, try again, you broke up.
Yeah, I was just wondering, how many votes were we shy considering it to finance?
Seven, six. So seven said no, seven, six, Counselor. Seven, six. You need seven to send it to committee.
One of my notes that I took is one of the reasons why I wanted to send to committee was the counselor had said that they want constituents to be heard. That was a big reason for me wanting to go to committee. And um I guess I'm. Can we take another vote to have to go to finance?
Motion, consider.
Motion is to reconsider.
Second.
It was seconded. What's the motion to reconsider?
Send it to, to send it to finance.
Motion is to reconsider to send it to Finance.
It's a separate vote. To, motion to reconsider is one vote, sending it somewhere else.
Motion to reconsider. Hold on, motion to reconsider, all those in favor.
Which vote I want reconsidered.
Yeah. Motion reconsider.
The only motion to reconsider is the motion to table.
You gotta unmute. You gotta, wait, right, to reconsider tabling to then send it to committee. That's so. Motion is to reconsider the table. All those opposed? Well, a lot of people are on mute, so I won't be able to do it unless we show a hand or roll. What's the preference of the body?
Roll call.
And then what, exactly what are we doing, Todd?
It's frozen.
There's been a motion to reconsider the vote to table. So we're just voting on the motion to reconsider if we get top up.
Yeah, it's uh it's kind of freezing up here. So motion was to reconsider. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I said everyone was on muted, froze up, so to reconsider, all those in favor? All opposed? No, I'm honestly in doubt, so we need a roll call.
Other discussions to reconsider?
Counselor Granny, yes, to reconsider.
The reception that that I'm watching on this this television set, and I'm confused what's going on here. I can imagine how the public must be confused. This is ridiculous. They're not getting the full story here. And it said, uh we we can do better than this. And I I'm sorry, but the uh the tech. The what's going on here is 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 very difficult. It's very difficult to follow.
It's freezing up, bro. I agree. It keeps freezing up. So the motion for those who are at home. The motion for those who are at home was to reconsider the tabling. I could not tell the vote. There, which I heard one person say it. We need two more to reconsider.
I I thought the motion was to reconsider sending it to Finance.
Well, yeah, it's a motion reconsider the table.
Last motion.
Yeah, yeah. So last motion was to table, table. So are all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Which the chair would be in doubt. Therefore, we can do a show of hands or a roll call.
Show of hands.
Show of hands.
Show of hands. Those who want to to reconsider, first I'll go to Counselor Granny, because we can't see hands. Counselor Granny, motion to reconsider tabling.
Yes.
That's one. Anyone else, please hold up your hands. Two, three, four. I only see four hands. Uh we're missing.
Bart, Counselor Bart.
Bartley. Did he leave? Uh Counselor Bart, I only see four, so the motion does not care.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. Yes, Counselor.
Finance Committee with a joint meeting simultaneously and then following with the ordinance committee. Will be meeting with our guests with DLR, Melas, and E. And various department has been invited for the. Long-awaited financial discussions pertaining to this fiscal year, prior fiscal years. Leading into the ordinance committee's debate of create creation of a financial director. Um I heard Counselor Murphy said he didn't get noticed. Um but this, it has been properly noticed. We are. All the guests, I believe, are still on. We're gonna just recess. I mean, I'm sorry, we're gonna adjourn. Ryan will keep this going. We're just gonna re-reconvene or re, I'm sorry, convene the Finance Committee on this Zoom channel.
All right, so with the motion is to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Stand adjourned from this meeting, the joint committee will take up the next meeting in a few minutes, as Counselor McGivern said.
Thank you. It will be five minutes, and we'll convene Finance and Ordinance together.
Thank you.
Thank you.